We'll call the meeting to order for our Waukesha County Council Legislative Session 2023-09 for May 2, 2023. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name.
Thy kingdom come; Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us on in the temptation of the deliverers' evil; but Thy has kingdom and power and glory forever. Amen.
In allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice alone.
Entertained motion from council approve the consent agenda?
Filled.
Motion second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Consent agenda passes. This time we have a proclamation to recognize Children's Mental Health Matters Week as May 7 through the 13th. Ms. Jamie Manning, Executive Director of Life Crisis, and Ms. Jamie Riley, Director of Waukesha Partnership for Families and Children, are here. Counselor Luanne Shaney Shields will be presenting the proclamation. We'll be doing so at the podium. Great, okay.
As President Cannon said, beginning May 7 is Children's Mental Health Matters Week. And I shall read this: Whereas mental health is a key component in a child's healthy development, and Children's Mental Health Week provides the opportunity to focus on this important matter. And whereas, according to the United States Department of Health and Human Services, one in five children is diagnosed with a mental health condition. And whereas, research has shown that early identification and treatment of mental health disorders among children provides better opportunities to lead full and productive lives. And whereas, children and youth with mental health challenges in their families benefit from access to services and support, and also benefit from the integration of behavioral health and primary care, education, and child welfare. And whereas, it is important that families and communities learn about warning signs of mental health disorders and where to obtain necessary assistance and treatment. Now therefore, the Waukesha County Council and the county executive hereby proclaim the week beginning May 7, 2023, as Children's Mental Health Matters Week, and call upon all citizens to observe this week in an effort to raise awareness of children's mental health.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Meredith Miller, and I'm actually the Mental Health Coordinator for Waukesha County Public Schools. Unfortunately, Ms. Riley could not be here this evening. She is with the Waukesha Partnership for Families and Children. But we wanted to thank you for recognizing the importance of children's mental health. Our schools and community partner with the Children's Mental Health Matters Campaign, which is a statewide campaign that brings together nonprofits, schools, and other agencies with the following goals: raising public awareness of the importance of children's mental health, reducing stigma of mental health, and connecting children and families with resources for prevention and support of mental health conditions. This year, the campaign focus is empowering families and communities. And we do this by providing them with information, tools, and supports to recognize when and where to access care. The other goal is engaging others to reduce stigma. By doing this, we begin conversations early and often to talk about mental health and wellness. Just to share with you, our schools in our county, we are all registered as community, as school champions, excuse me. Next week, our schools will have numerous events in their schools, as well as there are several events within the community at each school location. This coming Friday, we are actually hosting a downtown mental health event. We are partnered with the City of Salisbury, the Waukesha Partnership, and Waukesha Public Schools. We're having an event from 5:00 to 7:30 right here on the Downtown Plaza. We actually have 70 organizations right now registered for our mental health awareness event. We're going to have lots of activities for kids, lots of resources for families, and so we hope that you guys have a chance to stop by and visit. I'll leave some flyers up here for you guys. Thank you again.
Thank you.
We thank you for recognizing Life Crisis's contribution to the community. It's really the first line for people in crisis, so remember to use our hotline, 988. We've had quite a tremendous increase in calls, so mental health is really part of the whole health of the person, so please, thank you for recognizing us.
Week as May, the month of May. And we have, I'm sorry, week, I'm sorry. It is a week, May 7 through the 13th. Vice President Shane Baker will be reading the proclamation. We have a couple of people from Corrections here. If you'd like to all come back, everybody can come over here and behind the podium if you'd like. Strictly your choice, but if you hear, you certainly may.
Come on up, more to Mary.
Some of you can come on the other side, too, behind Mr. Mitchell. Glad to have you all here.
So this is a proclamation for National Correctional Officers Week. Whereas correctional officers have the difficult and often dangerous assignment of ensuring the custody, safety, and well-being of inmates, and their position is essential to the day-to-day operations of correctional officers or correctional facilities. And whereas the duties of the correctional officers are increasingly complex and demanding, and the professionalism, dedication, and the courage exhibited by correctional officers deserve the utmost respect. And whereas, the important work of correctional officers often does not receive the recognition it deserves, and it is appropriate that we honor the many contributions and accomplishments of these men and women who are vital component in the field of corrections. Now therefore, the Waukesha County Council and the county executive hereby proclaim the week beginning May 7, 2023, as National Correctional Officers Week, and call upon all citizens to observe this week in recognition of all correctional officers.
On behalf of the staff, we'd like to thank you for the recognition. It takes a special kind of individual to walk into the jail day in and day out and face what they face, unarmed, with utmost professionalism, and they do it every single day. They are the unsung heroes of the criminal justice system.
If we could, if each of you could announce, let us know your name and your position or your title. We'd appreciate it.
Chris Tyler, Director.
Thank you.
I'm Charlie Tenell, and I work in a mailroom.
I'm CO-1 Kellum.
Sergeant Carson.
CO-1 Freeloaf.
CO-1 Willis.
Sergeant Russell.
Eric Dickerson, Finance Supervisor.
Thomas Campbell, Deputy Director.
Michael Jameson, Deputy Director.
Sergeant Elliott, Central Bookend Supervisor.
Master CO/Community Corrections Officer, Purnell. Last but not least.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2024 budget. A public hearing notice was posted on the county's website and published in the local newspaper, saying that a public hearing would be held this evening at 6:00 PM. The proposed fiscal year budget is posted on the county's website, and a summary is displayed on the screen behind me. I also have copies of the presentation on the table, which is right here behind me, as you walk in, showing the departmental request for fiscal year 2024. The county executive has submitted to the county council, as required by the charter, a balanced budget. She proposes a budget funded by many revenue sources, the principle of which is local property taxes, followed by local income taxes. The budget proposes a decrease in the real property tax rate, but since the property tax rate is higher than the constant yield rate, a public hearing is required by law, and that will be held at the next council meeting, scheduled for May 16 at 10:00 AM. In looking at the expenditures for the operating budget, I will review one page at a time, as shown in the handout. After I am finished reading each fund number and title on the page, if anyone has anything they would like to say in regard to any of the funds on that particular page, please go to the microphone and state your name, county of residence, and provide your comments. Historically, the majority of the public input has been with regards to the Board of Education, so that will be read last. We do ask that you keep your comments to two minutes or less, to allow everyone time to speak, and we do have a timer showing on the screen behind me, so please be mindful of your time. Also, please try not to repeat what others have already stated. So let's get started. Fund 1 is County Council. That's $964,357. Circuit Court is $2,606,385. Fund 3, Orphans Court, $98,149. State's Attorney's Office, Fund 4, $4,802,960,000. Fund 5, Executive Administration, $702,234. Fund 6, Community Promotions, $37,500. That's the first page. If there are any public comments, please go to the microphone and provide your comments. Seeing none, we'll move on. Fund 7 is Elections. That's $2,059,179. Fund 8, Finance. That's $1,464,232. Fund 9, Public Accountant, $145,000. Fund 10, Purchasing, $340,174. Fund 11, Law, $406,893. Fund 12, Human Resources, $826,619. Any public comments for that page? Moving on. Fund 13, Planning and Zoning, $2,327,803. Fund 14, General Services, $1,694,313. Fund 15, IT, $1,476,657. Fund 16, Liquor License Board, $286,772. Fund 17, Sheriff, $17,036,487. Fund 18, Salisbury Fire/Ambulance, $1 million. Okay, moving on. Fund 19, Volunteer Ambulance, $4,895,000. Fund 20, Volunteer Fire, $3,187,635. Fund 21, Corrections, $20,855,837. Fund 22, Emergency Services, $4,313,562. Fund 23, Protection of Animals, $507,011. Fund 24, Public Works, $810,114. Fund 25, Fruitland, Water, and Sewer, and there's no funding proposed in the fiscal year 24 budget for that. Any public comments? Okay, next we have Fund 27, Mosquito Control, $210,833. Fund 28, Gypsy Moth Control, $35,000. Fund 31, Community College, $6,639,054. Fund 32, Public Library, $1,767,303. Fund 33, Tri-County Council, $1,075,482. Fund 34, Public Health, $4,676,819. Fund 35, GOB Security, $102,289. Fund 36, Extension Service, $155,704. Moving on to the next page, we have Fund 37, Community Access Channel, $242,000. Fund 38, Office of Economic Development, $228,450. Fund 39, Police Accountability Board, $16,250. Fund 40, Pension and Retirement, $3,010. Fund 41, Hospital Disability and Death Benefit, $349,269. Fund 42, Workers' Compensation/Liberty Insurance, $740,000. Fund 43, County Debt Retirement, that's $5,951,000. Fund 45, Social Services, $4,175. Fund 46, Transfer to Other Funds and Contingency, $21,768,562. Fund 47, Fleet Vehicle Lease, $817,000. Okay, moving on. Fund 50, Roads, that's $12,928,443. Fund 60, Recreation and Parks, $3,265,249. Fund 83, Grants and Mandates, $458,210. Fund 84, Teen Adult Centers/Dove Point, $61,362. Fund 85, Maintenance of Age in Community, $300,000. Fund 86, Commission on Aging, $750. Fund 87, Life Crisis Center, that's $13,500. Any comments on that page? Okay, moving on to our Governmental and Enterprise Funds. We have Fund 51, Solid Waste. That's $10,245,170. Airport, that's $4,086,073. Fund 53, Electrical Board, that's $45,041. Fund 54, Local Management Board, that's $1,233,022. And Fund 56, Narcotics Task Force, and we do not have any funding proposed for fiscal year 24 for the Narcotics Task Force. Fund 60, Recreation and Parks, that's $5,737,532. And then we have Funds 61 and 64, Waukesha Youth and Civic Center, that's $6,706,136. Fund 62, Tourism, that's $4,053,593. Nursing Home, $10,107,600. And lastly, we have Fund 30, Board of Education, that's $58,988,718. If you have any public comments on any of those funds, please go to the podium and provide your comments.
That concludes the public hearing on fiscal year 24 operating and capital budget. Next, we have a public hearing for Resolution Number 59-2023 to approve and accept, excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry. To approve and accept a grant from Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development for the Waukesha County Housing and Rehabilitation Program in the amount of $500,000. This time, if you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this particular resolution, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns.
Mr. President, I would like to announce that for this public hearing, as well as the other public hearings on the agenda, a public hearing notice was posted on the county's website, as well in the local newspaper. And we do have Mr. Jesse Drew here, who's our Community Development Planner, if there's any questions for that resolution.
Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on Resolution 59-2023. Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 59, 2023?
Filled.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution passes.
Next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 60-2023. This is to amend the Waukesha County Water and Sewer Plan for a property located at 4920 Snail Hill Road, Salisbury, Maryland. And council had a work session on this request on April the 4th, and we have Heather Langford here, Acting Director of Public Works, if there are any questions.
This time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution Number 60-2023. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on Resolution 60, 2023. Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 60-2023?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution passes.
Next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 61-2023. This is authorizing the county executive to use $150,000 of American Rescue Plan funds to support the development of the Pirates War property, and to amend the fiscal year 2023 through 2027 capital improvement plan, and to amend the fiscal year 2023 capital budget to authorize the funding changes. And council had a work session on this request on April the 18, 2023.
Entertained motion from, I mean, sorry. This time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution 61-2023. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on Resolution 61, 2023. Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 61, 2023?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution passes.
Next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 62-2023. This is authorizing the county executive to use $825,000 of American Rescue Plan funds to perform a complete modernization of the Waukesha County Youth and Civic Center escalators, and to amend the fiscal year 2023 through 2027 capital improvement plan, and to amend the fiscal year 2023 capital budget to authorize the funding changes.
At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution Number 62-2023. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution 62-2023. Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 62, 2023?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution passes.
Next is a public hearing on proposed amendments to Chapter 26, Retiree Benefits of the Personnel Manual. And for clarification, these amendments are to Chapter 26, not Chapter 17 of the Personnel Manual. There was some confusion on that chapter number, so the public hearing notice originally showed Chapter 17, but that was later changed online to Chapter 26. And also please note, this is just the public hearing. The resolution is farther down on the agenda because it is associated with a collective bargaining agreement.
Ms. Riley? This time, we open the floor for public hearing on the proposed amendments to Chapter 26, the retirement retiree benefits. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concern. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on the proposed amendments to Chapter 26. Mrs. Hurley?
Okay, next is the Waukesha County Delegation Legislative Recap on the 2023 General Assembly Session.
Thank you. And we have a few here tonight. Appreciate you coming. If you don't mind, sit up front here.
Patty, you gonna join us?
Okay. So for the, those in the public that don't know who you are, if you could state your name, please. Give us your district and your title, so that the public is aware.
Delegate Charles Otto, District 38A, and I'm in part of this district now. I'm part of this delegation, so thank goodness for, I've survived 10 years, and we had redistricted, and I got part of Waukesha back.
We're glad of that, too.
I'm Delegate Chris Adams, District 37B, Talbot, Dorchester, Carolina, in Waukesha, and I lost a little bit of Waukesha to my colleague, Charles Otto.
You can pull it over there and twist it. Have you got it, Johnny?
It's great to be here. Johnny Mouts, new state senator. It's been an exciting time serving in the Senate. I just finished my first year there. In the Senate, I'm serving on the Senate Finance Committee. I've also been appointed to the AELR Committee, which is the committee that reviews regulations before they're implemented, and that's an important thing to keep in mind for the next four years.
Okay, great. It's just an open exchange, really. We're kind of interested in seeing how the year went. We have gotten letters from some of you in regard to what happened in this last session, but it's always good to hear it face-to-face, as far as, you know, give us a breakdown, and the public a breakdown from your perspective. Charles, if you'd like, we could start with you. I know you've warned me on letting you act live here.
I usually let the senator go first, and then I say me, too.
We'll do that. Senator, I apologize.
Well, I was gonna make a joke, because ordinarily, when we come and to do these discussions, we'll have this whole table, because there's seven, we have seven officials for Waukesha County. I was kind of looking around, where is everybody? You know, it's been a really busy time. This was a transition session. You know, we got a new administration. I think there were 60 or 70 new delegates. I was one of a handful of new senators. You know, we had some key issues for Waukesha County, and Senator Crowe is not here. As you don't talk on it, because she worked on this bill, but we created a sanitary district for Waukesha County. Delegate Anderton pursued a number of different funding priorities for Waukesha County, and Senator Crowe also pursued the expanded deer hunting. To my chagrin, it includes some additional Sundays with To my chagrin, it includes some, some additional Sundays with a cutoff of ten-thirty in the morning. However, it is an additional opportunity to get out and, and go after and try to harvest some deer. There are a number of things that went on during session. I'm, I'm interested to find out which ones are of, you know, of top concern from, from your perspective. You know, we did have some issues early on, and just cut, cut right to the chase on. There were some bills that went on early because we had some filing deadlines, and they were withdrawn. They were very controversial, and we withdrew those right away. We had a bunch of discussions in the past over introducing bills and not having, having everyone sign off on them and vet them. And so there was a little confusion at the beginning of the session, and I think once that was apparent, we cleared the air with that to make that stuff go away. There was, well, anyway, I could, I could carry on. But those were the, from, from my perspective, some of the highlights, you know, in the session. I want to leave plenty of meat on the bone for my colleagues, and I'll finish up with some more details for you after they get a chance, so thank you.
Thanks, Senator.
Okay, well, Council President Cannon and Wacomico County Council, County Executive, it's good to be here. You know, this is my ninth year in legislature. I serve on Economic Matters Committee, have a series of subcommittee assignments. So I'm a small business owner in the General Assembly and, and fight those issues. I'll start by just talking about the, the budget. You know, we had a sixty-three billion dollar budget we passed this year. We left about one point five, I'm sorry, two point five billion dollars between the rainy day fund and the structural surplus in the budget this year. One of the things that the Department of Legislative Service warned us about is that education spending in the next three years is going to run us into a structural deficit of one point seven billion dollars. And I share that with you because it seems like for the past handful of years under COVID, we have run a very strong state budget from federal dollars that have hit our, our General Assembly and the General Fund. And so now that those dollars are gone, there's a real concern about how many programs do we stand up as a state that we continue to want to stand up and run, and how are we going to afford those? I imagine this is a theme with different county budgets and also city budgets, because these federal dollars just simply won't continue. The other issue with our budget is the idea that we have a, a deficit of one point seven billion dollars, and we need to be very careful about everything that we mandate coming down on the counties, specifically education spending. So when we talk about Kerwin and the blueprint, everyone here knows what's coming with that, or additional unfunded mandates that at the end of the day, you'll be looking at the state and saying, how are we going to be able to afford these additional programs? How are we going to be able to afford additional teacher raises? And you're going to hear from the legislature that we don't have the money to help fully fund those things. You'll then have to turn to the citizens and say to them that we may very well have to raise taxes, or the legislature is going to have to revisit Kerwin and the blueprint and really try to understand how this is going to impact the, the county governments. Let me just be blunt. There's not one county in our state, including Montgomery and Prince George's, that doesn't have real concerns about these ongoing mandates coming through education, you know, spending. And I would just caution the, the county council that I think we need to be very careful about what the costs are, making sure that the state, if we're going to have these mandates, that we do it in a way that's reflective of our ability to afford them, and then how are we going to pay for them down the road, and hopefully not through the lens of tax increases. I can talk a little bit about cannabis. We legalized cannabis during the legislature this year. There's only two comments I want to make, given the brief amount of time you probably want me to talk. But number one is that we took away so much of the local planning and zoning component. So I serve on Economic Matters Committee. Senator Mouts is on Senate Finance. And they are truly taking away your local planning and zoning control about where and how the dispensaries, the grow facilities, the process facilities will be located, located in our, our county. There was a lot of pushback, both from Mako and Maryland Municipal League, about how the counties can and should be able to, through local input, through the local planning and zoning, decide what's going to happen. The other comment that I'll make about cannabis is that we were completely silent on the mental health issues with legalizing marijuana. So whatever tax revenue we anticipate on deriving from this, there's going to be a health detriment. We know that. I don't think the legislature took it seriously this year because it wasn't part of what they cared about. They wanted to stand up a licensing structure and a loan, just a licensing structure. They didn't want to talk about anything else. So just the last thing on cannabis. You're wondering, we're going to raise all this money because we passed it to legalize it, to tax it and derive revenue. The counties and the local municipalities stand to gain very little from the, the tax regime that's being put forward. So you might hear about ninety-some million dollars in tax revenue. But is it going to fall to the county budget, to, to the locals to be able to handle the healthcare concerns? Well, the answer to that is, is no. Now, speaking of meat on the bone, I can stop here. We passed family medical leave this year. That's going to be something that'll come over the next couple of years, through how much we're going to raise to, in a tax, to the employer and the employee. It will go into effect in twenty twenty-six. Certainly will affect the county governments because it applies to county governments. And then we also passed minimum wage. The only comment to make on that is it went to fifteen dollars an hour come January first. Most private sector employers are already at fifteen dollars an hour, so I think the government's sort of behind on this. What we were successful in stopping was the CPI or the automatic indexing or inflation to the, the minimum wage. So there was never debate. They, they didn't want a future debate on minimum wage increases. So we stopped that and said that we must, as a legislature, if we're going to raise the minimum wage, have a debate here from the business community, here from our governments, how it's going to affect local revenues and how we can afford those things, that we should always have that debate and that fight in the House of Delegates and the Maryland Senate. So I'll stop there and pass it on to my colleague, Charles Otto.
Thank you, Delegate Adams. You've covered a lot of the issues that I knew you were more familiar with, and that's why I'd rather come up last. I'm, serve on the Environment and Transportation Committee, and we've been serving there for, this was our thirteenth session. And it's interesting, we're going to end up with a new chairman. He's going to the Public Service Commission. Kumar has been, Barve has been a good chairman and fair and interested in what our concerns were on all issues. But it was a challenging year with the new faces, the new people, and we had less bills, really, this year. I think we ended up passing eight hundred bills. But there was like close to two thousand that were introduced, but that, and they, most of them found the right place in the graveyard. But as Delegate Adams talked about, the fifteen-dollar minimum wage, it concerns me about the creep, the wage creep that you'll have to deal with as well, and I hope you found that in your budget. You know, if you, if you're paying an eighteen-year-old fifteen dollars, what does the thirty-year-old with experience and education want? Now, that's going to impact all of our economies, both local government and the, and the business community. And there's, there's all kinds of challenges with that. And as Senator Mouts, sorry about that, mentioned, we did get the deer hunting passed, but we were forced basically to accept that ten-thirty deadline on any additional days. But we were able to keep what we had. So I thought that was a win. And, and I appreciate the county council and the school board, their information on, I think it was House Bill one nineteen, that healthcare things that were going to do, change curriculum and things like that, that I don't think anybody cared for. All my three counties sent me letters to oppose that, and, and that's very important, and I appreciate it.
Yes, Johnny.
So I left one other issue out. That was the funding for Title Health and the Trauma Center, and we did a lot of work on that. Delegate Hutchinson isn't here, but he put together a bill to create a commission. Trauma centers are having trouble with funding across the state. But in, right here in Salisbury in particular, we were able to get some relief, but that still is a major concern. That Level Three Trauma Center serves the whole lower shore, and it's not a resolved issue. It's, it's still up in the air, and something that I think is worthy of the council to be aware of, and, and the county executive.
And Johnny, I'll, I'll add, it serves all the state of Maryland. They, they showed us pictures of the number of patients that they get from Western Maryland and particularly Southern Maryland. I mean, it, when they're, the beds are full at University of Maryland, they come somewhere.
Right, well, I mean, we'll just say, I'm the chair of the Eastern Shore delegation, and for the bulk of our session this year, we did focus on healthcare and then also interfacing with the, the governor's office through the cabinet secretaries. But to the point on healthcare, you know, rural delivery, rural delivery of healthcare is a real challenge. I, I know you know this, but Title Health was front and center in the news, and how we were trying to advocate in front of the governor's office, and also in front of the HS CRC, which is the Health Services Cost Review Commission, who is really the, the difficulty in this conversation. Because as Charles Otto said, Delegate Otto, you know, you've got Baltimore City, you've got other areas in the state where we think we have too many beds. We have too much service for the number of people that live in these communities. And here we are on the shore with a Level Three Trauma Center that desperately needs some help, some funding, to match the amount of demand that's being put on that health system. The problem with Title Health and other health systems is we capitate the amount of money that the health system receives, and then they have to learn how to operate under that, that budget number. And what business in healthcare are you, are you able to say, well, no, I've stopped my ability to serve? They have to serve as many people who show up that front door as needed. And that's creating some inequities that really, at the end of the day, we all elected officials have concerns. And I know that the county council has and county executive has worked towards trying to advocate on behalf of this, this trauma center, because without it, we're in deep trouble. Where would you go for trauma care? And, you know, we need to take this all very seriously. I know that you do.
Along with that, there was money appropriated for Easton Hospital. The University of Maryland system is trying to, been replacing that for many years, and there is some money in that for it. And we did get full funding for the Cade Formula for the community colleges, which is our best value in education that I find.
Yeah, I was going to say, we all know that Dr. Hoy, or President Hoy is, is retiring. We still haven't figured out a way to keep him. But I don't think anybody really understands, especially in the public, just how much time Dr. Hoy spent in Annapolis. You know, to, to run an entire community college and then spend the amount of time he did, because he's also returning. So he has to go through those, those motions as well, and the amount of hours he spent up there. So I, I'm, I'm confident that we'll go find a, a great replacement. But keep in mind that whoever it may be, they'll be new to this whole process, and will need more than ever the support of the Eastern Shore delegation to help us with the same efforts that Dr. Hoy had to go through over the many, many years in keeping the Cade Formula where it's supposed to be or improving the funding. Because I, I really think that, that our community colleges as, could always have more, get more funding. Because out of all the community colleges in the state of Maryland, based on the, the revenues that they do receive, per, per dollar, we get the best investment for the taxpayers of any other community college in the state of Maryland. I'm not out of line, correct, Dr. Hoy?
Amen.
So if you can continue to convince all your, your fellow delegates and senators of that, that would be a really high priority for us as well.
And may I add, it was a highlight this year to help cut the ribbon at the technology.
Yeah, the great work that's been done. Any questions?
I do, John.
Yes, Joe.
Down here.
Yeah.
Several years ago, at the beginning of the Great Recession, I had a conversation with a former delegate, and he commented about how long the ride was coming back to the Eastern Shore when they'd been given the numbers, what was going to happen in the future in the state. And we've been hearing about these write downs, potential write downs. Do you want to elaborate a little bit on that and what you've heard?
Sure, I'd be glad to do that. So, you know, the board of-
For fair warning for, as we're coming into our budget, I guess is a good way to put it.
So the, we have had revenue write, write downs. The Board of Revenue estimates meets regularly and then reviews a projected, what the revenues are going to be. So the Comptroller's Office is a part of this. And so during session this year, we were late in passing the budget because we had nearly a five-hundred-million-dollar revenue write-down, and it's subject to further write downs over time. And so they have their job to make sure that legislature doesn't overspend money, that we know what we're dealing with. And I think it's safe to say that, that each time that committee meets, we should be paying close attention. We believe, and I think we all, as if you're in business or just in government, that the economic forecast is, is going to be difficult, that inflation is having an impact, that the interest rates that people are paying for mortgages is hurting construction and new home construction for sure. And a recession's coming. The question is, is it going to be a deep recession, is it going to be a shallow recession? But anybody in government right now knows that for the bulk of our past three or four years, we have run off of significant federal dollars and have been able to ignore whether or not the economy is doing well, doing poorly, which section of the economy is delivering the most revenue, tax revenue. And if we know that right now, that these future state budgets and maybe local, like I mentioned before, city or county budgets, we're counting on those monies, and they're not going to be there, but yet the citizens and maybe elected officials want these programs to stay stood up. The money's going to have to come from somewhere, and it can only come from one place. And this has been the warning, Councilman, that the only way to drive revenue like that, when you have these kind of shortfalls, in my opinion, is you cut expenses and prioritize where you're going to spend these monies, or you're going to have to raise taxes. And that's, that's a very difficult place for anybody like me to want to participate.
Delegate Adams, with the minimum wage, is it, my understanding, the tipped worker exemption is still in place?
You know, Senator Mouts would have deep experience with the restaurant, but they did not pass the, the wanted removal of the tip credit. I don't know if you want to-
That would have been a game changer for the restaurant industry.
Yes, it would.
Yeah, that's an important, I expect that bill will come back because in some places, particularly Washington DC, they have eliminated the, the tip credit. And in the hearings that we had, at least on the Senate side this year, the people that were promoting eliminating the tip credit were there representing themselves as if they were part of the hospitality industry. But it was clear that they were part of, of a group, an activist group tied in with a labor group or whatever, whatever. I'm not sure where, what their base was. When the opposition appeared, they were clearly people that made their living in the hospitality industry, and they were very persuasive. However, you know, that, rejecting that bill last year, I don't think is a total victory. I expect that will come back next year. So the, the industry, especially in an area like the Eastern Shore where we rely on tourism, it's, it is a, it's an important part of our economy. And so everyone that's involved in that industry needs, should pay close attention, and they should stay involved because I, I don't expect that will go away.
Isn't this the second year that's come up? Multiple years.
Yeah, multiple years, yeah.
Thank you.
I am, I'm glad you did, Chris, you did say that they stopped, they did not enact the CPI clause on the minimum wage, right?
That's right. The governor very much wanted that, and the legislature, I think rightly, said that the economy wouldn't allow for it. And, you know, we have the gas tax that does this, by the way. We'll never have another debate on a gas tax increase, and what happens with gas taxes? They always go up. And so minimum wage is a different thing. Hopefully, we don't revisit that.
Good, good.
And I think one of the highlights, and I didn't mention this, and Delegate Otto didn't mention it, but this was not a year where there was an attack on agriculture, which was a relief to us. However, this is a transition year, so I think we'll find out what comes at us next year. But in the past, we've always had some agenda or some initiative targeted, you know, at the agricultural community. And Speaker Pro Tem Sample Hughes has been fantastic in helping us with the leadership in the, in the House. Delegate Adams, Delegate Otto is a rock, you know, an institution. In the Senate, this is going to be new for me next year, but, and I know Senator Cruz is ready for it, but that, that's always a point of concern for us.
I, I will say, Johnny, there was a PFAS bill that they put in Health and Government Operations, posing it as a health thing. And PFAS happens to appear in a few of the pesticides that we use in agriculture. So there was a little bit of attack, but that went to a summer study. So, and there's some other things. We had a septic bill that are onsite wastewater that went to a task force type of study that probably to gather the data that we really need that's not readily available.
Yeah, this last year, it was a very different session because everybody was somewhat new elected, and we were trying to push, I know from Wacomico County's perspective, we were trying to push so many things at last second, you know, you know, in, into the General Assembly. A lot of it didn't work out, and I, and I understand why because of the- A lot of it didn't work out, and I understand why, because of the rush that was required, and you guys are on a limited timeframe as well. But I think this year, we'll do much better. We did get the Sanitation Commission approved, which is great. But I think, again, this year, we're going to be looking to try to make a more concerted effort. The liquor dispensary issue was one of those that we tried to, I think it might have made two attempts to try to get, you know, to your desks and to get, and get to the floor. But we do have a committee now that's working on that, so it'll be something that'll come to you very early so that the bills can be prepared and drafted in a more responsible fashion. And it might make it easier for you to introduce it and to deal with it in your committees as well, we're hoping.
If I may, I'll mention a bill. You had the correctional officers in here.
Right.
And that's appropriate. I did get a bill, Greg Collins was killed on Indian Town Road there near Vienna, was an officer at ECI, and he did his job. And it was a hit, and it was 20 years later that it was determined that it was an in-line, in-service death. And we did get benefits for his widow and his daughter, that she was six months old when he was killed. And we can't make them whole, but it was, he was the only one that could qualify for it. And the benefits are there now for existing officers, so.
The only other thing I can think of is I know of working on a water and sewer master plan. Not quite sure how that may develop. We're right in the middle of that as well, but there may be some legislation that could be coming your way, just to make you aware of that ahead of time. We'll have to see how it breaks out. I do know that there's also issues still ongoing, very, very much of an ongoing issue with our well and septic systems in our Health Department in Wycomico County. It's been going on forever, and we all know that. We don't seem to be getting much, much help with it. I must say that Maryland Department of the Environment was very helpful in getting the circuit riders down here, and we're actually funding this. But as far as how successful it's been, we're going to have a meeting with them, probably in our next meeting on May 18th, to sort of see where we are and what success we've had with the circuit riders from Maryland Environmental Services. But it would be really nice, we don't know yet if there's any way, from a state perspective, that we can try to have a more coordinated effort on the part of Maryland Department of the Environment and Maryland Department of Health to right the ship. And it's not only in Wycomico County, it's throughout the state of Maryland. But it's almost bringing development, new development to a screeching halt in our county, and we have Sussex right to the north, and we don't want them going to Delaware. So I'm sure we'll be having these discussions further, but keep in mind, we really need to do what we can for this county to make sure that we try to keep, keep development here and keep growth here and try to, you know, improve our economy. But it's coming to a standstill.
Do I have a moment just to respond to that?
Yes.
So, you know, we each year have, and it comes through Environment and Transportation, a series of bills related to well and septic, and some of these are written, if I don't mind just saying, in a way that's not necessarily transparent as to what the aim is, but let me just tell you what you and I both know, is that the aim is to make it much more difficult to have well and septic as the methodology for developing. They really would like to have smart growth, which is centralized, urban-style development, you know, build up but not out. And the difficulty that I have with that is, on the rural Eastern Shore, what's a starter home? I mean, that should be a three-bedroom rancher, it should be somebody with a dream of being able to own a house. That dream in Maryland is becoming less and less achievable. And you're absolutely right that in Sussex County and Delaware, demand is matching supply. I mean, there's housing, I don't know if it's cheap enough to make it available for the first-time home buyer, but let me just come back to you and say this one thing. When you have existing housing and you have a need to replace the septic system, it should not take one year to go from the day that somebody shows up to put a permit request in to actually get a permit approved to have the system replaced. Forget what the cost is, okay? The cost is the cost, and there's the Bay Restoration Fund for helping people finance them. What I'm saying to you is, I believe we have a broken system that has come from the top down. It has made it difficult for local decision-making and to have the relief that people need. And if you're a Realtor trying to sell a house where there is not a clear and convincing system that works, they have a hard time even selling a house. I mean, it's just, it is clogging the market. It's making it difficult for supply to meet demand, and buyers are just going elsewhere or else they're renting. And I don't know if that's what the aim here is, but let me just say, the bills that we see come through, the ones that we try to stop, I almost stop every one that has any relevance to well or septic, because I know what they're headed toward. They would just love to be able to say that you can't put a septic system in unless it's a four-foot mound.
Right.
That sounds like.
And I know the County Executive is about to chew the microphone over there, because the Greater Salisbury Committee and Coastal Realtors have really done a lot of really good work. They've had Suzanne Dorsey, Les Knapp, they've had them right here in Salisbury. I'm not sure if it's a monthly meeting or bimonthly meeting, and it's widely recognized. And some of the problems are geological. It's, you know, the changing of the water table and things like that. But other things like the circuit riders, trying to get employees into the Department of Health, we've got a new Health Officer, which is wonderful. There are some sparks of improvement, but overall, as Delegate Adams just mentioned, we've got a long way to go.
Yeah, and, you know, last year, we even wrote to the state, and we said, look, if just change your ranges, your salary range, and if you'd like, we'll cover the difference in Wycomico County. That's how important it was for us to be able to pay these people more money, because they're state employees. We just said, if you change the range, we'll cover the costs. And it was rejected. So that's probably what we'll need your help on, trying to work with, you know, the Office of Budget Management, or Maryland Department of Health, or Maryland Department of Environment, to sort of come, try to put something together where we can come to a solid solution, because it keeps repeating year after year.
If you go to the Department of Budget Management asking for anything, you should definitely contact us to make sure that we can weigh in on your behalf.
That's good. Well, that's what we need, because we're not quite sure of maybe how you have to go through those processes on your, on the state level.
Yeah. Speaking of the septic tank issue, I had a call from an installer a few weeks ago. Says that Wycomico County now has a new regulation that's not the same as other counties on the shore about the type of tank they have to use. And I was wondering, you know, is there any uniform, uniformity to, you know, putting in septic systems? And it seems, this is what I hear from people in the business. They seem to make up the rules as they go along.
Well, Joe, I don't know that we want a uniform thing across the state, because the different ge-
I didn't say the state.
Geology.
In the areas.
But the area, that's important. I mean, I have challenges in Somerset and Worcester and all the counties, and I've listened to enough stuff. They required some new septic system that the crook's been in there for six years trying to get it passed, and he got it passed this year, because he's the one that's casting them.
This happened, you know, Wycomico County has to have a different kind of tank now, and they have to have in Worcester or Somerset, so.
Well, I mean, I'll just, I'm a private business owner and I own property in the county, and I will tell you that I have experience with the difficulty to get a system put in. You know, whether or not it's a traditional system, whether it's an innovative system that's alternative, let me just say, it should be, you walk into the Health Department, you file for a permit a reasonable amount of time, especially if it's a failing septic system. I don't want to put a holding tank in. I mean, I think that's one of the solutions. An MDE wants you to apply a 2,500-gallon, 2,200-gallon holding tank, agree to a consent order to have it pumped every so often. That's the kind of tank, when you start talking about different types of systems, I think the MDE is perfectly happy with this idea that we're just not going to let you put a septic system in with a drain field. I mean, that can't be possible. But I got to tell you, if they're letting you take six, nine months, and I'm just going to say, with some degree of experience, to get to a point where they're going to hand you a permit so you can replace a failing septic, that's not only wrong, that is simply out of bounds for what government should be doing. And if it's coming from the top down, where MDE is saying to the county, we're just not going to let you have the flexibility, then I think the county needs to push back, because this is the real experience, and I think Realtors are going to advocate in the same way that I just am.
John, we've been pushing back, John, for what, 16 years?
Before you say that, so MDE is not saying that at all. So, we've had those conversations with MDE, and so we are going to be working with them this summer for those exact situations. So, they are not saying that. That is a local issue that we will be handling.
What aren't they saying, excuse me?
They are not saying that they have to put in holding tanks. There are other options that were never presented to a lot of Wycomico County residents. So, we are working very closely with MDE, with Les Knapp and Suzanne Dorsey, so, to make sure that we are making sure that every Wycomico County citizen has every option given to them, so we're not stuck with just holding tanks.
It's my understanding there's quite a few holding tanks in the county, so anyway.
No, there are holding tanks in the county, but it's a county issue, it's not a state issue. So, it's more, I shouldn't say that. It's a combined effort, but there seems to be more blame from our local level. So, since there's some new blood in there, hopefully, we'll be able to alleviate a lot of that.
I don't want to think that, I don't want to think that the state of Maryland sometimes feels that holding tanks or mounds are an easier exit. I would like to think that they have more sincere motives, whereas they want to put a holding tank in or they want to put a mound in, because it's the only option outside of doing it, because it's the fastest way to get it done, and it takes the less amount of work on the part of everybody involved. You follow me?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And I'd like to pivot, pivot a little bit, because we were successful in getting the sanitary district up and running. And I can share with you, we spent a lot of time in session, and we've got four counties in our district, and Dorchester County has a sanitary district, and they've had a lot of problems, a lot of challenges, a lot of issues with their district. I would encourage Wycomico to take a look at what's happened in Dorchester County. Not necessarily to say, don't do that, but just learn from the challenges they've had so you don't walk into the same scenario. You know, with sanitary district, you know, you're talking about a new billing system to fund that district, where they bill citizens, and not everybody's aware of what that means. When you say sanitary district, everybody says, oh, great, they're here to the rescue, until they get a bill in the mail. And, you know, with any other government program or service, that bill generally doesn't go down. And so, having a mission, guidelines, guardrails, oversight, I mean, it needs to be taken very seriously. Just because we've got a sanitary district commission created doesn't mean that the road to success has been laid before us. It's going to take some time and some careful thought and some planning, because we're at a crossroads in all this, this wastewater management and what's happening. You know, there's, in Sharp Town, they're talking about the concept that people bounced around, you know, regional water treatment facilities that would connect certain areas of the county, things like that. These are bold ideas that people are just talking about, but they're real ideas. And so, we need to be really careful, because, you know, that will carry on for many, many councils to come and many senators and delegates to come. But you want to make sure you get that right.
Appreciate you taking the time to be here, because we know you have very busy schedules as well. We have 100% confidence in each and every one of you. We're, I know, I can speak for the entire council, we're very happy with the entire Eastern Shore delegation, because we know how hard you're all working. And I think that your constituents should certainly feel secure that they do have solid representation.
John, if I may, the number one issue is crime and public safety, and the only thing we passed was SB 1 to take the guns away from the law-abiding citizens and public.
Yeah, good point, Charles. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next is the submission of, submission of an appointment to the Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee. In accordance with Charter Section 315, the County Executive has submitted a nominee to the Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee. The Natural Resources Advisory Committee was established in 2009 for the purpose of developing a comprehensive GI plan with strategies to implement green infrastructure conservation in Wycomico County. Resolution number 63-2023 is to confirm the appointment of Mr. Dylan Lacunick to serve as a member of the Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee.
Entertained motion of council to approve Resolution 63-2023.
Second.
Second. And discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next for your consideration is Resolution number 64-2023. This is amending the collective bargaining agreement between Wycomico County, Maryland, the Office of the Sheriff of Wycomico County, and the Wycomico County Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 111, also known as FOP.
Entertained motion of council to approve Resolution 64-2023. Second.
Sir.
Discussion.
Ann, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this resolution.
We have a motion to postpone Resolution 64-2023. Second.
Can we maybe discuss on maybe when we can postpone it to, or maybe a special legislative session?
Yeah, we have a second, yes. What the idea is right now, and right now, what we're looking to do is to postpone it. We know that we have budget hearings coming up. We know specifically, I believe it's on the 11th that we're going to be meeting with Sheriff Lewis and his staff, which should give us a better idea of exactly how the salary ranges will develop and exactly what the costs will be. And I think, once we've done that, then we will revisit the, all of these resolutions at the same time. I had prepared a statement, because it appears that we're going to be postponing and postponing the, all the FOP-related resolutions, and I think there's one legislative bill that we'll also be postponing here. We were trying to move most of this forward, and I was hoping that we could approve the collective bargain agreement, the Resolution 64, 65, 66, and 67, which all were going to amend the retirement plan, the personnel manual, the position control documents, and the legislative bill to amend the county code. So that's why they were on the agenda tonight, but we were recently, I was recently informed that the actual collective bargain agreement, which is Resolution 64, the first one, has to be amended and approved first, and that we can't go anywhere, any further unless that's done. So, that's where we are with this one, considering the fact that this resolution does involve salary increases for all the deputy. I think we wanted to make sure that we could at least meet with Sheriff Lewis and his staff and, before making any decisions tonight. So, and I know Scott Hamilton, we're glad to have you here tonight, you can sit here if you'd like.
No, I'm fine standing. This is just briefly. Thank you for having me. Scott Hamilton, I'm the President of the Fraternal Order of Police here in Salisbury Lodge 111. I just wanted to offer a letter to prepare you for any further entertainment of the resolutions. If I could provide you with a letter that has been provided to the County Executive and her counsel, just to let you know that ratification was completed on April the 17th in preparation for any further consideration of any resolution.
Thanks.
Mr. President, do you want to comment on that, or have me comment on?
If you'd like to.
The issue is that if, if there is a change now in what's proposed, either coming from us, from this side, or from the executive, or the sheriff, or the FOP, the FOP is going to have to approve it again. So, that, that document, I anticipate, would have been fine for these proposals, but since these, if these proposals remain as they are, it would have been approved. But if there's any change, they have to approve it again.
In accordance with our bylaws, we just wanted to submit a written record to you, and to the council, and to all the attorneys involved, that the proffers that have been presented to us, to include the wage amendments, Appendix C modification, and any other portions of this amendment, were taken into consideration by the members and voted upon and ratified. And that's the sole purpose of that letters.
I'm saying that, I'm just-
And we have no problem doing a ratification again, should it be-
We recognize that, sure. Thank you.
And we understand, everyone understands the need as, that there is a need for some more time. We understand that there's meetings that are happening next week. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. So, as it is, we do have the one on the floor to answer James' question, it'll probably be the 16th. I don't want to get ahead of myself again, because we do, we know we have budget sessions with a lot of different departments, but we know that there's a sense of urgency in trying to get this done. So, yeah, it'll be as soon as we feel comfortable that we can get it back on the agenda, yes.
So, maybe just right on the next agenda, not a special?
It would not, well, if we have to have a special meeting, if we have to do-
I was just thinking, I was just thinking, if we do get ahead of ourself and we don't finish the whole budget, could we maybe do it like on the, like the 20th, or just, you know, just depending on everyone's schedule?
Yeah, it's a good point. We can always schedule a special session, correct.
Cool.
So, so we still have a motion to postpone, and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Resolution 64-2023 is postponed. Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 65-2023.
those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Resolution 64-2023 is postponed. Entertained a motion to approve resolution 65-2023. Motion? I need a motion discussion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Motion to postpone.
There's a motion to postpone. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Resolution 66-2023 is postponed. I'm sorry, 65-2023 is postponed. Entertained a motion to approve resolution 66-2023.
Salute.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Motion to postpone.
Yeah, a motion to postpone. Resolution 66-2023. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion 66-2023 is postponed. Entertained a motion to approve resolution 67-2023.
Salute.
Second.
Second.
Any discussions?
Motion to postpone.
We have a motion to postpone. A second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Resolution 67-2023 is postponed. All right, thank you for your patience. Mr. Hamilton, thank you for your patience.
Yes, sir. Thank you for allowing me to be here.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, this, it probably falls under what you just went through. This is Legislative Bill 202305, an Act to amend the Wacomico County Code, Chapter 59, Personnel Rules, Section 59-15, Accidental Disability Benefit. And this, of course, would also deal with the CBA, so.
Entertained a motion from council to introduce legislative bill number 202305.
Smooths.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Need a motion to postpone that?
Yes, sir. Motion to postpone. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. The introduction of legislation bill number 2023-05 has been postponed. Mr. Mitchell?
This is Legislative Bill 2306, an Act to amend Chapter 133 of the Wacomico County Code titled Animal Control, Article 1, titled General Provisions, Article 3, titled State Animal Care and Cruelty Law, Comma, Article 4, titled Potentially Dangerous Animals and Dangerous Animals, Article 6, titled Empowerment, Confinement, and euthanasia, I'm sorry, using "nejun." Article 7, titled Public Nuisance Adoption Liability, Article 8, titled Animal Care, and Article 12, titled Civil Penalty.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. At this time, entertained a motion from council to introduce legislative bill number 2023-06. Second.
Second.
Mr. Illuminati, did you have anything that you wanted to add? Because we've met a few times with Ms. Knack. I knew we've had, we've met a couple of times on this.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So just as a quick recap for the public, the former council met and workshop this, this council met, worked shop this. Ms. Knack and I have been working on this for about 12, 13, 14 months. We believe that this will address the public's concerns, animal controls concerns, and allow the public to have more of a proactive say in what they're experiencing with their neighbors' animals. So I believe this accomplishes anything. If there's any other questions from council, or Mountain County Executive?
All those in favor of the introduction of legislative bill 2023-06, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Introduction to legislative bill 2023-06 passes. Thank you, Mr. Illuminati. Thank you. Thank you all for, for your help. We know this has always been a really tough, tough subject to cover. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any public comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please state your name, your county, your county residents, and your concerns.
Yeah, Bruce Robson, Wacomico County. I was just wondering if you could update me or fill me in on the process going forward on adopting the budget, you know, in terms of public hearings, and maybe it's all already happened, but could you just update me on that?
For the most part, the public comments is not a question and answer. We try to avoid that. But we can tell you that the council will be holding several sessions throughout the next couple of weeks with the department heads. We had the public hearing for the budget tonight. If you have any comments that you would like to make, I would say that we're still in public comments, of course. If there's any particular department that you'd like to talk about, you may do so now, because this is the opportunity. Or in any other future council meetings, you can come at any time during public comments and share your concerns as far as any aspect of the budget.
Well, I guess that was the one thing about the income side of it. You referenced that it's, of course, a balanced budget, but I didn't see the income side of it, the revenue side of it, I should say.
That's a good point. You can download it. You can go online, you can download it, and you can look at the entire budget yourself, and you can see, and there, well, there were copies. They're all gone.
Yeah, it doesn't show the individual line items for the revenue, though. We just did a pie chart, but it is posted on the county's website. If you go to Departments, it's under the Finance Department's website.
It'll show you all the income. It'll show you income tax receipts. It'll show you the property taxes, everything that you need to know about revenue sources. You'll see it. Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes, sir?
Yes, good evening. My name is Dave Chillington. I, my wife and I are also very brand-new down here. As a matter of fact, we just learned how to say Wacomico.
Congratulations. How about Salisbury, okay?
Exactly. You wouldn't believe what the names in my house, Wicomico, whatever. But I recognize this committee. I was on township committee in my town in Waterford Township, New Jersey. We relocated down here, and anytime I hear a reduction in taxes, it's music to my ears after 38 years living in New Jersey. And that's why we chose Maryland, and that's why we chose this county. We live in Nutter's Crossing, and we're just thrilled to death with everything that this professional council is doing. I don't know a whole lot about all of you. I voted for some. But I just wanted to say that it just seems that anything you're doing for public safety, I was the OEM coordinator, public safety director, director of Public Works in my career, and anything you can do to a fireman, or EMS, or first responder, yeah, hats off. Anything you can do. When that bell and that whistle goes off, and mostly in my town, we were volunteers, but paid or volunteers, you're still risking your life every time that alarm goes off. So anything I can do to help spread the word amongst my community, I would, I would be here for you.
Appreciate that. Maybe we'll hear from you when Campaign 2024 comes up.
Well, if you want to reach out to me, I could give you my personal information, whatever I could do. I've always tried to help the town that I lived in, and this is the town that we now live in. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
Hi, Lynn Mitchell, Wacomico County. Just a quick reminder, there's, might be some money in parts of recreation budget. Please keep that in mind. We really, really, really want this playground in Powellville. Julie, I probably will maybe email Steve this week and just reach out that we need some money. So just keep us somewhere back in, in the thoughts.
Thank you, special.
Hi, council. I usually don't do this, but I wanted to say a couple clarifying remarks. This isn't the one why I'm standing up, but with the sanitary district, Senator Mounts made some good points, which is why myself and the county executive proactively have already been speaking to both Amanda Pollock and MDE on different models around the state that would work with the sanitary district. And what we've stressed at the Greater Salisbury Committee meetings over and over, and I do it every time it comes up, is getting into water and wastewater is a long-term thing. This commission is not going to be built in a day. It's going to take a lot of thought, a lot of process. The bill doesn't take effect till October 1st, and, and it won't be created, I'm sure, by then, but assuming the governor signs it, it won't. So this is a long-term project, and we're well aware that there's a lot of thought and effort that need to go into the policy behind creating that district. The reason I wanted to get up and speak, though, was there was, the fire service agreement, obviously, has been a topic publicly. There have been some misstatements in the public that the county has not paid anything to the city, and that is totally erroneous. We have. We had a five-year agreement with them where we paid an average of about $760,000 a year. It was different because it's modeled on X amount of dollars per call, and there's different amounts for different kinds of calls. So we pay them for their effort. And again, that was the model that we went in this year, where we wanted to do it again. The city decided that they wanted to do what Mr., if I think I can say it, Mr. Wilber deemed an unauthorized tax, which they were calling a fee, but it wasn't unauthorized tax. I'm not sure what the city's going to do now, but as I've told them, the executive's office has presented a budget. We put $1 million in there. You know, they probably should have come to us months before this, so there wouldn't have been the time crunch. But that's sort of where we're at now, is that we've, we've paid them for the effort. I think that fair-minded people can say that maybe they don't like the rate that they've gotten in the past, but that was a negotiated deal that they agreed to as a city, we agreed to as a county, and we followed through. But you're not entitled to make up your own facts, and it's erroneous that we haven't paid them. We absolutely have paid them. So just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Any other public comments? That concludes public comments. Council comments?
I have one. About two weeks, two and a half weeks ago, I did, I'm pleading to the TV audience, if they're looking, and I had a constituent to call me about untagged cars and abandoned cars and yards and rubbish. And I'm just making a plea to neighbors, if they have untagged cars, just think about your neighbor who may have a manicured, manicured yard, and then you have this abandoned untagged car, what it does to the community. And I suggest that the community organize themselves and write a letter, because some people don't want to give their name as an association or something to target these homes. I went through and found, I found one house that had 16 cars, found it had 24 bicycles, a potty, and our code enforcement, I said, "How'd you find that out?" Well, I drove up in the driveway to tell the people they couldn't do it, but I didn't know at the time he accumulated all these after I told him. But I just plead with the, the neighbors to be aware of when you have an untagged car, what it does to a community and the quality of life. Thank you.
The comments.
I think it's important that we continue to keep an open line of communication with the city of Salisbury on the fire service agreement. I think that's-
I agree. Under Council President's comments, Mr. Lawrence, I'm glad you made that comment, because it is true, and I do recognize the fact that there were comments made, the fact that the county wasn't contributing. And true, I think we went into the one, one negotiation with, trying to, very much try to come up with some type of a compromise. And I know we have budgeted this year, again, above what was prior years. I believe we went from $776 to $1 million right now. Now, how that's going to separate out, I don't know, because again, I think that we have to still be on a per-call basis until we do, until the dust settles. There's been suggestion that there's going to be what they call the nuclear option, where, you know, the extended area outside, outside the immediate city limits is not going to be served. I don't think that's a real option. I think anybody will tell you, if you have Station 1 sitting across, and it's always the same analogy, if you have Station 1 sitting across from Parkside High School, how are they not going to go service that, that building if it catches fire? So I don't think that's a realistic option. It certainly, I don't think is feasible for the citizens of Salisbury or Wacomico County. And again, the agreement we had was working very well, and I would just seriously like to see the city come back to us, which is what I really thought was going to happen before they came out with the, with this $300 per house tax. I thought they were going to come back to us with the numbers, their capital expenses, their operating expenses, and how they might break that down per call, as we did the first time, so that we could have a realistic idea of just what those costs might have to be to help the city of Salisbury, you know, meet their needs. So I appreciate you making that comment and that clarification. That being said, entertain a motion to adjourn from legislation to go into open sessions, followed by a closed work session pursuant to the General Provisions Article, Section 3-305B1, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, to the Deputy Director of Public Works' position to protect the privacy of the individuals. That's a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Meetings adjourned. I'd like to thank you all for attending.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you all.